Eagles Ridge. Item four is a final plat for Eagles Ridge Villas. Then we have other business and adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'm of approval with the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fairbanks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peele. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two on the agenda is site plan design review for Dental Depot, and Mr. Wright is going to make the staff presentation for that.
All right. Thank you Chairman Graham and Commissioners. Before you this evening is a request for a site plan design review for Dental Depot, which is a new dentist's office proposed to be located at 1500 Southwest 7 Highway. This site is located at the southeast corner of Southwest 7 Highway and Southwest Keystone Drive and is owned GB General Business. This site was previously used as a QuickTrip until 2017, when they consolidated stores at the 40 and 7 location. The former convenience store building includes approximately 3,300 square feet, which is located kind of the back portion of the building. And then the applicant is proposing approximately 2,400 square feet of building additions to the front of the building and to the south side of the building, which would bring the total building to 5,700 square feet. The proposed building type is classified as a general commercial building and meets all the minimum size, coverage, height, and setback requirements. A variance for the rear yard setback was approved by the Board of Adjustment on September 11th, which would allow the rear setback of the addition to be reduced from 25 feet to 15 feet, which allows a small offset from the existing rear setback of the former QuickTrip building, which is setback approximately 14.3 feet. Existing access to the site will remain in place, as is along 7 Highway as well as Keystone Drive. Accesses won't change due to the proximity of the traffic signal there at the 7 Highway and Clark and Keystone intersection. The only access changes are internally, which is just rerouting the access drive through the parking area to accommodate the new parking lot. Previously where the parking lot is now would have been where the gas canopies were. The site plan does meet all the internal pedestrian access requirements, including pedestrian access from the Southwest 7 Highway sidewalk to the main building entrance, as well as the widening of the sidewalks along the frontage of the building to meet that access requirement. Site has met minimum parking requirements, which is 29 spaces. They're proposing 32 spaces onsite, so they do meet and slightly exceed that requirement. And then they have also met the required bike parking, which is four spaces. They have provided two bike racks, each capable of holding at least two bikes up at the, near the front entrance. The applicant has provided an alternative compliance landscape plan for the site, which is primarily related to the existing non-conformities on the site, including a one and a half foot encroachment into the 15-foot landscape buffer along 7 Highway. That is an existing encroachment of the drive aisle from the former QuickTrip use. There's also a reduction requested from the 25-foot landscape buffer at the rear of the building to 15 feet, which is consistent with the building setback. And also waiving the six-foot fence requirement when it's against residential zoning. The reason for that is the two-family zoning to the rear of the property. Even though it's zoned for two-family residential, it's actually being utilized and owned by the shopping center to the south and being utilized as their detention basin. So it's unlikely that that would be removed in the future and developed as residential. Also, the detention basin is completely surrounded by a six-foot, four to six-foot privacy fence already. So there's already two fences, plus I believe the duplexes that are behind the detention basin already have a fence. So you already have potentially three privacy fences. So a fourth one is not going to make a difference in that buffer. But even without that fence, they have provided the minimum requirements for the 15-foot landscape buffer at the rear, including maintaining some of the existing trees that were there on the QuickTrip site. The site does meet all other landscaping requirements, and as mentioned, will preserve the existing landscaping, as well as adding additional landscaping, several new landscaping beds along 7 Highway and along Keystone. It should be noted that even with the reductions of the buffer under the required alternative compliance, over 15 and 1/2 percent of the site still consists of landscaping buffer. So it does meet that small site waiver of any time that there is more than 10 percent of the site is buffer, they can request a reduction in that. So staff does support that reduction, given that they're still well over that 10 percent minimum. The site, there was a photometric plan that was included. The site does utilize all of the existing pole lighting in the former QuickTrip parking lot, and they will be adding one additional lighting, additional light pole in the parking lot, as well as some building-mounted lighting. As mentioned, they will be adding new building additions to the former convenience store building, mostly to the front and then as well as a wing to the south of the building. Exterior building materials will primarily be stucco with brick along the base on the fronts and sides. The rear will also be stucco with a cement board siding that will be utilized for screening of rooftop equipment. The single-story building will include a clock tower element, which is designed to resemble a train depot. Here's a colored, kind of a colored rendering of what they would be proposing. And then there are also, they were able to provide some examples that they have of some of their offices elsewhere in the region, as well as some of the additional features that they would, are proposing, including kind of a model train, as well as a water tower sign element. I will mention, it should be noted that signage as shown is not being approved as part of the site plan design review. However, several items, as shown, may not meet the current sign code and will likely require a master alternative sign plan to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission prior to permitting. Due to the branding of the business, any train-related items would likely be considered signage, which would include the weather vane, the train out front, as well as the water tower element. So just wanted to make that clear that that's, the signage that you're seeing is not being approved this evening, but it may come back to the Planning Commission at a later date. Other than that, the proposed building design does meet the non-residential design requirements by providing a mixture of building materials, colors, heights, and projections. Staff does recommend approval of the site plan design review subject to the six conditions in the staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wright? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks.
I just want to be sure about that buffer zone back toward multifamily and back up there. And the only reason I bring that up is because I know that the south branch of the public library, their back parking lot, does not have any buffer at all to the duplexes behind it. And it doesn't look good.
Yeah, they will have, they will be installing landscaping, and then unlike the library, as I mentioned, there is, and I'll bring up the aerial here. There is a detention basin here, and they do have a fence that wraps around that entirely. So there's already a buffer that's already been provided there. So it will be a greater buffer than what QuickTrip had had previously.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Thank you. With the applicant, I'd like to make a presentation. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Phil Fitzgerald. I'm from Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. We have worked with Matt on all the local codes and ordinances, and so we're willing to abide by all the ordinances. We went through the variants last week. They said they may have asked for some additional landscaping, and we have no problem with that. We do think the addition to the south will really help buffer a lot of the noise off 7 from the, keep noise away from the residential area. So I think that will help. We will meet the signage codes. Those photographs there show some, quite a bit of signage on there. So we'll, the doctor would like to build a water tower, but, and we don't need signs on it. So it's a, he'll ask for all the signs he can, but we will abide by the signage code, so. And then the doctor is, has, actually got a doctor that wants to move back to Kansas City area, and he's from this area. And so that's how he came to purchase the QuickTrip and is ready to become a good neighbor to the community. Really good people. We built several of these for him. And there's a lot of great train history memorabilia that he collects that is inside the building, too. And one nice thing about them, they're open Saturdays, and walk-ins are always welcome. So really a good business model, too. And the little train that we built is, each one's built by an artist that welds these together, and they're really fascinating. There's no signs on the train. But from that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to comment, though. I think it's a really unique plan, and I'm glad to see something going in there.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, they run a really nice business, and it's a, they take care of their business, and they've become part of the community. Some good people.
And they come back and then wind up here in Blue Springs. That's great.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan design review for Dental Depot. SPDR-08-19-7046 with the six staff conditions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Stoltenberry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item will be the planned residential overlay, final plan for Eagles Ridge. Mr. Jury is going to present that, and he will be presenting item four as well for the final plat, and then we'll consider each item separately. Mr. Jury.
Thank you, Chairman Graham, Planning Commission. Before you today is a request from the applicant, David Ward with Blue Springs Safety Storage South, requesting approval of final plat for the second phase that he's been doing down at the Eagles Ridge Villas portion, which is also, let me get this number. Also, the fifth phase of the overall subdivision, I believe. There we go. And it's located on the north side of Major Road, about 200 feet east of Tennessee Drive, which is part of the original phase, or the phase prior to this one. And, how do you scroll sideways? There we go. And on, it's about, covers 10 acres, approximately 10.7 acres. And this phase originally included 32 lots, but actually, one of the, one of the lots, they turned into a detention area to meet the required stormwater detention requirements from Public Works. As you can see, Track D is the main one, but then Track E is a lot that they actually turned into a tract. And so there is one less lot now than previously approved in the concept plan and preliminary plat. This, the proposed final plat and PRO final plan are in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat and the concept plan. And I'll go over some of the minor changes that they've gone through in the, in the time being since those approvals, one of those being that tract. But prior to building permit issuance for any of the lots on this plat, the final plan and final plat must be approved, and the final plat recorded at Jackson County and returned to the city. Future final plats and final plans of the future phases will be required prior to any building permits for the remaining phases. Altogether, the lot layout and size matches the concept plan, except for the one lot turned into a tract. All of these properties, all of these lots meet the size and the width originally approved. They are a little bit less than, I guess the original concept plan approved the lots to be a little smaller, 85, almost 600 square feet, than required at 9,000 square feet per lot. But that was part of the original concept plan, and so this just matches that. The street network matches the preliminary plat, as does the pedestrian-proposed sidewalk network. There is a limit, a no-access along Major Road, so that none of the duplexes can access directly off of Major Road. Can't have any driveways on a collector's street of that size. One thing I will mention is Southwest First Street typically would be required for the developer to install a temporary cul-de-sac until that next phase is developed and continues First Street here at the north end of the, that street there. However, the developer is currently constructing those roads, and they're under, they're grading it out and everything. So rather than having him install a temporary, or a temporary cul-de-sac, we're just requiring a temporary easement be recorded prior to building permits being issued. And we actually do have the money in hand if the developer did somehow, or just quit building the future phases. We do have the money for the city to actually install that temporary cul-de-sac to meet the emergency access turnaround for a length of road that size with, without a cul-de-sac. So we're covered in terms of the emergency management and safety. The, as far as streetscaping, open space, and amenities, the proposed development does meet the street tree requirements. And I'll show you the street tree plan. The street trees shown here meet the minimum requirement, as well as the amenities, the amenities proposed do match the approved concept plan, providing a trail running through Track D, as you can see there, as well as a playground in Track D. Landscaping is provided in all the tracks as required by code as well. None of this has been installed yet, so we are also requiring a financial guarantee, which we received today, for those amenities, street trees and whatnot in the open space tracks. Prior to final plat approval of the last phase of the Eagles Ridge Villas subdivision, or Phase 7 of the Eagles Ridge subdivision as a whole, all street trees and open space amenities adjacent to or within the open space tracks in Eagles Ridge Villas should be installed. That's one of the staff conditions. That way, before we approve the final plat and the developer has the opportunity to walk away, all of those amenities should be installed. Part of the open space streetscaping, street lights should match the lights previously approved in prior phases. They are working with Public Works currently to authorize the placement of those streetlights with case P and L. And a streetlight agreement should be approved prior to placing those streetlights. As far as public improvements, the property owner is proposing to dedicate a portion of Southwest Major Road, the northern half of Major Road down here. But they are not required to install that portion of Major Road because the previous phases, the developer has already installed this subdivision's required street improvements to Major Road, since they did full road improvements for about half the length, rather than half-road improvements for the full length. That way, we had a complete road to access to their first, or to Tennessee Drive where it comes in. So they were not required to install full road improvements or even half-road for the, the half of Major Road that they touch, since they also installed the south half on the side that they don't touch. Prior to final plat approval, however, there are some required sidewalks running each open space tract, or a little bit of sidewalk right here by the open space Track D that was financially guaranteed today. Also, prior to occupancy of each lot, required public sidewalks should be installed. And prior to the final plat approval of Phase 7, or the last phase of Eagles Ridge Villas, all public sidewalks should be installed adjacent to open space tracks. As far as the building, class, or building design, the proposal meets, or matches the existing approved from the last phase of Eagles Ridge Villas or the duplexes. Here are some elevations showing these approved plans from previous approvals. The, a couple things, the buildings appear to meet the, as proposed, appear to meet the minimum setbacks, maximum height and building coverage for each lot, as well as the required offset between garages when they're adjacent to each other. Such as this one, there's a required two-to-four-foot offset when garage is next to each other. And also adheres to the maximum garage width for each building itself. With all that, staff does recommend approval of the PRO final plan and the PRO, or the final plat as well, with five conditions, removing the sixth condition since the, since staff did receive our financial guarantee today. So I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jury? Yes, Commissioner Phillips.
Yeah. Can we go back to what you were just talking about with Major Road?
Yes.
If that, if the developer isn't putting in that section of Major, how is it ever going to get, where, where's the money, when's it going to get put in?
So there is a couple properties left. If I could show you a little bit more of Major Road, I would. But, let's see. So 7 Highway being somewhere over here, Adams Dairy Parkway being over here. Colonial Highlands built Major Road to their entrance. Eagles Ridge built Major Road to their entrance. There is Hudal that is required a little bit, as well as this property on the north side of Major Road. And all of those, they will be required to install full road improvements for half their frontage. So if you take half of this property's frontage, half of Hudal's frontage, and also the church's property that is left unplatted, all of those together should add up to the full frontage of Major Road being installed. The timing of that is uncertain, since all of those developments are not associated with this project, but...
So we've built, or he's building First Street, but First Street actually has no access because Major Road doesn't exist where it would come out. That's going to be confusing.
No, because First Street is going like this. The units are here on Major Road. Their rear to Major Road.
Well, there's still, there's still, there's still a piece of First Street that would come down to what will be Major Road at some point.
Yes.
And it'll have a house right next to Major.
Correct.
But it won't go anywhere.
Um, I will mention that there is one, one, I guess, one development that I forgot about, Gardens at Colonial Highlands. And they are, they will be installing Major Road to their entrance, which I believe should line up with First Street, if I remember right. Public Works might correct me if I'm wrong. But, but the Gardens of Colonial Highlands should be installing their portion of Major Road as well.
So there's still going to be a section.
I, I want Major to go all the way through, obviously, but I definitely want it to get to at least that First Street exit that we're building. So I don't, you know, if Colonial Highlands is going to do that at some point, you know, and that's still being developed, that's, would satisfy that. But, and probably in a foreseeable future as opposed to a possibly never.
Yeah. And one thing, code does, we can't require too much of a development, and code only does require half-road improvements for your full frontage, or full, full road improvements for half your frontage. And the developer has complied with that along Major Road. Anything beyond that would be possibly an over, overreach, I guess. But, but with that, I guess the Gardens at Colonial Highlands, they're piggybacking off the end of where Eagles Ridge stopped on Major Road and connecting to their required entrance or exit for their development, since they have enough duplexes to warrant two exits to their subdivision. The second one would be an exit off of Major Road, so they have to complete their entrance, or their exit to the point where it matches with, and yeah, this is Southwest First Street here. And I, they are required to complete Major Road to that intersection, which I believe should line up with First Street on Eagles Ridge.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fairbanks?
Didn't the city have an issue with Roanoke just this year or the past year for a very similar situation?
I don't know if Public Works might be able to answer that.
I mean, I guess you're referring to maybe Four Pillars?
Yes.
They, they did something similar in Four Pillars?
Well, but I think that it was, it was a long time before that road improvement occurred.
Yeah. They're supposed to be constructing it at any time with Phase 3. We got money, some monies were escrowed with Phase 3, and it's supposed to be built with Phase 4 of Four Pillars, the actual road.
Okay.
But we have money escrowed for the things, but to help pay for it.
Okay. Well, but what, what you're talking about here is unknown in the future, for the undeveloped portion of the road.
Correct. And one difference between, I believe, what rode, what happened with Four Pillars, Roanoke, is that that developer was required to install the road with future phases.
Yes.
Whereas in this case, a different developer is required to install that portion of the road.
But it still is a developer install the road?
Yeah, one developer and another, but not the developer that we're talking about tonight, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
I have another question.
Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
I noticed that half of the lots are below that minimum square footage for the lots. Was that in the original approved concept plan for half of those units to be in that minimum?
Yes. All of the, all of the lots proposed tonight do match the concept plan.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? It does not look like the applicant is here, so I would entertain any more discussion or a motion on the final plan.
Since you're looking at me.
Not intentionally.
Well, we just eyeballed each other.
Commissioner Banks?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the planned residential overlay final plan for Eagles Ridge. I don't know that you have conditions.
I think there were five conditions.
You've had five conditions on it.
There were six, but removing the five.
We removed one because...
Removing the last one, yes.
So we've gone to five.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Banks, a second by Commissioner Beal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That would bring us to the final plat.
Comis, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the final plat for Eagles Ridge. I'm sorry about the other one, I didn't mention the number. This is PF zero nine dash one nine dash zero, seven zero five nine, with the six, now five conditions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second from Commissioner Beal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That recommendation passes and will be sent to the October 7th meeting of the City Council at 6:00. So that brings us to other business. Mr. Mallon, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do, I do. I just wanted to let you know that we do have a meeting scheduled for Monday, the 14th of October. I suggest everybody has a nice big dinner before that meeting. We have quite a few items on the agenda for that meeting, including, I believe at this point, at least five public hearings and a number of other projects, so. We have had a couple of breaks.
Making up for us missing last month.
We've had a couple of breaks here over the summer, but, you know, we're, we're going to come back in full force on the 14th.
All right.
Progress.
Any other business? Commissioner Billups?
I have to, have to boot my, do my downtown plug here.
Okay.
Before our next meeting, October 7th is the annual downtown chili lunch from, I believe it's 11 to 1:00 at Pizza Shop, to benefit Downtown Alive, so come down and hopefully the weather will change a little bit by then, and we'll all feel like having some chili.
All right. Do they need to pre-buy tickets, or just buy on-site?
They do not need to pre-buy tickets. They can pre-buy tickets, I believe, at Pizza Shop, or at, on the website, at Downtown Alive website.
Perfect.
I don't know.
Any other business?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Beal?
On the final plat that was in with the minutes, doesn't that need to be voted on, for a motion?
No, it was under consent agenda, so it was approved with the vote of consent agenda.
Because in some cases, I know that we had done that separately, when it was included.
If it was pulled out for separate discussion, yes, but the way it was included in the consent unless we pulled it out, it was approved with the, the vote of the consent agenda. Commissioner? Any other business? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, uh?
I have a motion from Commissioner Fairbanks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Billups. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.